That's me.
Yes. Nice Thanksgiving break. Any motion for the approval of the agenda, which includes the agenda to the different agenda items one, six, eight, nine, and ten, and personnel consent agenda item two A.
So seconded.
Other. Popper.
Aye.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Muriel.
Aye.
And this is White.
Aye.
I need a motion for the approval of the minutes.
The move. Seconded.
Any comments or corrections? Mrs. Webber, please call the roll. Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Muriel.
Aye.
Mr. Popper.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
And Mrs. White.
Aye.
Great, Mrs. Webber, can you please review the meeting protocol?
Thank you, Mrs. White, good morning, everyone. Thank you all of you who are joining us virtually today. We are continuing to provide opportunity for our community to be able to access our meetings in a virtual format as well as in person. Mr. Fritz, could you please go to the next slide?
Yes, thank you, go to the next slide.
For those of you who are attending the meeting virtually, you can find our agenda out on the Board of Education website. The minutes that get approved, you will also be able to find those on the Board of Education website. We do have the chat enabled in the meeting. We ask that you use that only for issues that might be technical in nature, ID. If we have issues with audio, so on and so forth. If you do have questions or comments to send to the board today, we ask that you contact our moderator, Mr. Fritz, fritzwansigmar@board. Thank you.
Can you just speak up a little louder? Our microphone's up front here and it usually picks up well. Oh, when it's back there, we have our masks on, it's a little bit of a challenge. So that's all I ask, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz, I will try to use my theater voice.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. Mrs. Webber, do we have any public participation this morning? We have obviously. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to the student attendance agenda. Mr. Lewis.
So it's been a very difficult task to come up with calendar for next school year. And then obviously, we're starting to plan for the following school year. So, Mr. Fritz, if you could advance one more. Just want to give you a quick review. Obviously, we reviewed this at the last board meeting. We only had one minor change to the calendar, but I'll just quickly review some of the highlights again just for people that may have not tuned in at that point. So you can see that we were fortunate enough to work with our construction team. And thank you to Mr. Level and his team for giving us a start of August 29th, which, you know, and I'll caveat that by saying unless something majorly happened over the summer, we think we can hit that date. But, you know, I always leave that caveat in there of if something changes, we'd have to come back to you for a revision. But overall, we believe we can hit that date. And then you can see, we're going to get some time with staff before the start of the school year. So there's three staff days that we worked with them and perfectly timed with curriculum audit and being able to address some of the things coming out of curriculum audit. And then we have our two typical staff workdays before the start of students. Then we have our transition days again, we're very well received and heard lots of good things from our community and our staff about those days. And then leading into our really, our normal start, normal flow of the school year. Then you start moving throughout the calendar, you can see a teacher records day. And a highlight of that is not, you know, obviously, our teachers have contractually obligated time for records. But we also have student personal learning days built in. There are three of those built in, in blue on records days. And then two additional days that you can see there in November in front of what's called our Thanksgiving recess and conference exchange day. So those days, again, were so that we can squish the calendar. We needed to grab some student days. And our expectation for staff is that they will provide relevant learning opportunities that really flow nicely with the curriculum that they're currently delivering to students. And so I think that that will be as well versed as we've become to do that, based on the number of times that we've had to work in a remote environment. We'll be able to successfully do that and make that work. The thing that I would like to say about that is, you know, I've got some feedback from the community about, what does that mean? Is this going to be a long-term solution? It may or may not, but nothing that we've put into this calendar is precedent setting. It's just here so that we can get through this calendar. And we'll look at it in future calendars as we always do. We take in feedback, we think about how did it go? What was the success? And if it wasn't successful, we try something else. So, but I do believe at this point, we think that's what can make this calendar work. So, Mr. Fritz, next slide. So here is the major change. And I want to thank a community member, Jenny Barker, reached out and said, you know, did you look at March and did you look at? So the original spring break was going to be March 13th through the 17th. Then we would come back for four days. The end of the quarter would have been on the 23rd and then 24th was the records day. And she said, that makes no sense. She was right. It doesn't make any sense to take a week off, come back, have four days at the end of the quarter, and then have a records day. So we just flipped it. So really appreciate well thought, not, wasn't a, it was a really well thought response from a community member and parent saying, look, this, this makes better sense for students than it does. So we flipped it and I think that's just proof that, hey, we have two then community members and parents. But I, I think it shows that this is a partnership. We want to hear from you. If you come up with something like that, hey, if it makes sense to us and it makes sense with the rest of the calendar and doesn't hinder anything we're trying to do, we're going to absolutely try to make that adjustment. So that was, I'm very thankful that she reached out and shared her input. So you can see all the other stuff, nothing really changed here. We've talked about, you know, we have a winter break that's a little shorter than normal just to make, again, the student days work. And then you can see the other records days and holidays that are embedded on this screen here. Then last slide, just the end of the, end of the year, April and May, not much really to talk about there other than just some workdays at the end, again, to make the staff workdays work for the overall calendar. So again, if, I am recommending that this one be approved. This would be the final calendar. I don't foresee any other changes. And then we will get started right away on the 23, 24 calendar that I would expect will mirror a lot of this to get through construction one more time. So just a refresher, the only other thing I know, question that been asked previously about, you know, how does this flow with our, number one, are we over the mandated minimum number of hours? And I know we've talked about this at overtime, we're well over the state minimums for hours. And I don't believe that's something we would ever want to talk about doing is being in a minimum for state hours. I think we believe all we do. And then in previous school years, you know, just thinking about how many days are our instructional days? We have currently in this calendar, we have 175 student days, which obviously five of those days are not in front of staff. But in past years, 16, 17, we had 172 student days. 17, 18, we had 173 student days. 18, 19, 172. 19, 20, 172. 20, 21, 172. And then obviously, this calendar had 175. And that does not take into account if we had a closure for a snow day. Once we close for, you know, obviously, in, in March of a previous year when the pandemic hit, it didn't count for taking, I mean, we had to go remote. So obviously, I didn't go back and track all those days. But obviously, there would be some days in there that were missed because of snow days or calamity days, things like that. So I do believe this one is, even though there's five days not in front of teaching staff, I believe it accomplishes the goals that we set out for this calendar.
I need a motion for the approval of this whole calendar for 22 to 23.
The move. Sorry.
Mrs. Webber, please call the roll. Mr. Muriel.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mrs. White. Aye. Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Popper.
Aye.
Motion passes. Master facility plan update.
Yeah. I'll just give maybe a few high level. We don't have a presentation. We typically do this in the evening meetings, but there are a few points that I'll just kind of give to the board this morning. Couple of wins that we've had along the journey. Number one, we have a nice progression with not only the temporary space for our transportation department over on the old P and G site. We've got everything set up so that on the 19th, we'll be transitioning over there with our current fleet. So operations can begin after winter break from that temporary location. Again, everything's progressing really nicely with that. We're also moving forward with discussions about apartment locations. So we'll hopefully have more updates to you for that soon. We also got temporary occupancy at Sims for their media center. So that's really exciting. We've got books moving in there, furniture moving in. So they'll be able to start to have their media space now in the actual space and not in the gym, which I know our PE teacher is very excited about getting that space back. Everything at Sims continues to progress very nicely. I had an opportunity to take a tour of the new academic wing over there and also the stage edition. And I know that, I believe in March, they're gearing up to do a, a performance in that new area. So they're very excited about that. So everything at Sims is looking great. We're really looking forward to January when we can open up the entire building up to those folks. The other probably big thing that we've got going on is that the high school just finished another phase. And so we have more teachers transitioning to temporary space, but also moving teachers into their permanent space. And so that's an ongoing project, you all know that. So it kind of keeps moving kind of, I just say moves in circles, it feels like, the work that's being done. But it's all really good stuff. No updates at the moment on EH Green and Junior High, other than the fact that things are progressing nicely over there. So at the next board meeting, we'll have some visuals for you to kind of show you some, some more of that progress.
Mr. Level, do you know what area the high school's finished?
I should be able to tell you. I believe it's the social studies area. Yes, the social studies area. I say that with 95% confidence.
Oh, good. And the next area that they're tackling is?
I can't answer that question off the top of my head. I'm so, I, I will be completely transparent with you. I am so focused on getting the March work underway there, which would be the beginning of the natatorium, the gym, and those spaces, and looking at the summer with the renovations of the cafeteria and all that's going into that. The academic wings are kind of just rolling and happening. So I remain a little less focused on those. Yeah. But you know what I'll do? I can put together kind of the phases of that. We have those written down. I can pass that along to you so you can kind of see.
That's great, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I have to do it. I just really want to focus today after Mr. Level's great update on progress on different projects. Just want to really give you an overview of the budget, give you some ideas of the things that are coming up, the final areas of bid, so on and so forth. And give you an idea of what has already been obligated of the total MFP budget, which includes not only the bond issue funds, but also dollars from private funding, investment earnings, so on and so forth. So at this point in time of the total, which is almost $136 million when you combine all of those, a little over 82% of the, of that budget has been obligated, your contracts, purchases, so on and so forth, and about 17% that has not yet been obligated. And when I say not obligated, it means that there are either GMPs that are yet to be determined at the high school, purchase of furnishings and equipment at, I think, all of the buildings at this point, other than maybe Sims, and then contingency funds. And then a few projects that really aren't even yet totally underway because of private funding. So if you could go to the next slide, Mr. Fritz. So let's start out with the high school. As you can see, this budget is about three quarters of the way obligated. The remaining things that are still yet to be bid in this project are, number one, the interior athletics. And that does not include most of the natatorium. There's a bit of the natatorium that's involved in that. And I believe you just referenced that, that that's kind of our major area of focus right now. But that's the gymnasium. And primarily, the, the big lift on all of that is locker room areas and restroom areas in that part of the facility. It's been designed, but it's my understanding at this point in time, still finalizing that, but also really getting the pricing through HGC or our contractor there. So that's probably the biggest piece of that remaining part of the budget. Furniture and equipment is also underway in terms of, I think, and that's phased a bit. So their next phase of furnishing is also out for bid. And I believe there's kind of two additional after this one. So in looking at that, those funds, I think about a little over $5 million is for the interior athletics. Another about one and a half billion is for the furniture and equipment. And then we also still have a fairly healthy contingency given where we are in the project. It's still a renovation project. You want to make sure that you're keeping the dollars available to proceed with what we might find as we move along. But I think overall, we feel like we're in a pretty good place with that.
We do. And I would just add to the high school as well, when we talk about the furnishings and equipment. And it's kind of, again, it's a rolling project, so there's multiple bid packages. Obviously, as we start to pack, bid those out, costs have increased. And so what we're trying to do and be really aware of is what is the furniture we bought in the last few years? That's still really new furniture. We don't want to replicate that furniture and we want to do our best to be able to provide the right equipment. So the high school is actually going through a process now with their teams to do that audit of what do we have? What works? And how do we tailor that bid package to release as much, release the fewer dollars that we can in that area and be able to save for other equipment?
All right, and on to the junior high. Because that is more of a general contractor type project, almost everything with that in terms of the building construction was bid at the initial, out of the initial package, as opposed to how we've had packages that we've gone along with the high school and so. So remaining in that budget is about 1.6 million for contingency and then, or 1.6 million for furnishings. And then a little bit over a million dollars left in contingency for that project. So those two things are the things that are left. The junior high furniture and equipment bid will probably happen about a year from now.
Yeah, the next October. I'm sorry, we are, we are, thank you, Brad. Yep, no problem.
Good, go ahead, Ben.
But anyway, so much like the junior high, this was bid at the onset of the project. Many items are furnishings. That is currently, I think they're finalizing that, Mr. Level, is that correct?
Yep.
And that will be out for this, that we will have that in time for opening up the school year next year. Contingency, you know, is updated as we've gone along. A lot of that was eaten up by poor soils at the onset of the project. So we have a fairly low amount of contingency left. Fortunately, we're getting close to being done with that project. So hopefully, that will work out. But this is an area that we're going to need to continue to monitor. We're still holding $140,000 for site conditions. I know we've talked about those, we think they're resolved. The one thing that we don't know yet is what we're going to find when we do it on the old building. But they're still holding on, on that part of it.
This is what, what's the 285K, is that the total contingency?
That's what we have left, so.
You're saying the 140 of the 285, Mr. Fritz.
The only thing I don't have would be, I don't know that we have much contingency left built into the contract itself. But, okay, not a thing you like as well, okay. So that's, that's an area that we may have to look at whether we need to stop a couple of that. And we'll talk about that in just a little bit for some of the other dollars.
This is what, review, review concluded this particular building is the most likely to end over budget of the board.
Potentially, yes. And again, that was just getting it out of the ground, number one. And number two, this was one, if you recall, we did some shifting around with the budget at the beginning by determining utility utilization at the gym, other things. So, but I think the key thing that's been problematic with this, with this project has been the support.
We have the, the controls in place so that if this goes over, that we can overall manage that with the monies that were earmarked for the other building.
So as Sims gets to the point that we're closing up, we have a healthy contingency still remaining at Sims. And so we recognize the fact that we'll be able to leverage some of those funds. Obviously, we want to keep this in place probably through March, we were thinking, just because the gym floor is not, even though the project finishes in January, the gym floor is not going to be refinished until June. So there's some lingering things that will happen. However, we also know that we're ending that project with somewhat of a contingency remaining.
And also recall that we reported in last meeting that we had soft cost contingencies that have been raised. So we have about $500,000 to $600,000 left in that area that we're just holding right now for these types of things. And I think primarily, we're thinking that this is a project that needs to be done.
Yeah, and Ms. Webber had talked about as these projects come to a close, some of the areas, like the soft cost contingency, Sims, moving those monies to what we consider district contingency to be able to help for those projects that are maybe struggling a little bit more. But right now, that would be EH Green of all the projects.
We have a couple, couple, a couple options. Okay, Mr. Fritz, we'll be running to Sims. You know, again, as you would expect, we're nearing the close of this. We still have a little over $300,000 left in contingency on this project. I know that the remaining things that we're looking at, we do have a few alternates that we're trying to decide whether we're going to move forward with them because they're kind of, you know, this is your one shot at getting this building right. So there are a few things we're looking at, one being potential door replacement for the building. So that's something you may come back.
Yep.
And other than that, I think we're feeling really good about how this project has moved forward. Great, great building, it feels like a new building in a lot of ways.
We actually had, actually this morning, we have another school district that's touring that building that's going to be getting ready to do a construction project with their elementary. And so they were excited, SHP was able to showcase that building and have them come up and take a look at the renovations. So that's pretty exciting.
Our outdoor athletics, this one is one that all that we've really at this point in time have done is the new. So everything else that's still going to need to be bid, we are still in design development phase for much of that. We're hoping that we'll be able to get those finalized by February. Perhaps an early site package coming sooner. But working through that whole process to get, get everything underway with that. All right, the natatorium, again, it's in the design development phase. And when you look at the 3.1 million, that's what has been raised from private funding. There's a little bit of that high school budget that we saw before that had been slated to renovate the pool that we're also going to use to help getting this, this part of the, of the design and project completed. Currently, they're working on getting it toward finalization of a bid at the end of March. And I think we're continuing to work through our holiday name data fundraising to supplement that budget even a little bit more. Transportation, we, as Mr. Level noted, we are getting toward, getting close to finalization, we hope, of a permanent site. And we are working through the design development phase. At this point, the only amount that has been obligated is the design costs for the building. And finally, this is the last piece that, just looking at what we're calling kind of our district carve out now. Most of this is miscellaneous costs. So for, at least as far as what has been obligated. So that is insurance, legal fees, rentals, and things like that that are just kind of miscellaneous or types of things to make sure that we are keeping the project organized and, and continuing to have those kinds of reviews and the safeguards that we need to make sure the project is done correctly. The unobligated, again, about 600,000 of that is this district contingency that could go to supplement green, could go to, if it's completed, could be used for other capital improvements throughout the district that were to supplement other projects that might, that might have technical challenges. And there's a little bit carved out left that would be for remaining insurance and legal fees. So overall, you know, just wanted to really give you kind of a status update. A lot's going to be happening really the next round will be February, March timeframe in terms of figuring out of this unobligated funds, how those are going to be carved out, for use to finish up these projects. But overall, other than the challenge of green, it looks like most of them are on a really good path, considering, you know, everything that, that we've gone through to get these designed in the time of COVID. And again, thank you, Mr. Lewis, for your work with that. Mr. Level, you've done a great job of picking up all of that and your, your staff as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is source that has done a great job that's supporting this project.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I would just throw out too, as we talked about EH Green, you know, the risk being when we take down the building, we just all need to be prepared for the junior high as well. And so contingencies look healthy. We've had great progress. You talk to our contractors and they will say, we just don't know the surprises that may be there when we start to take that building down, take the fuel tanks out of the ground at the transportation department, that kind of stuff. So all is well, you know, we feel really good about how we're spending the monies right now and being able to be on time and on budget. And we'll do everything possible. But we also have those risks at the back end of the project specifically with those two buildings. I think we all just need to be, have on the front of our mind.
Mr. Paul, do you have the phase two or phase three, removal fuel packs?
Do we have?
Yeah, do you need to face two or face three of the removal fuel packs?
So Monarch Construction, we actually asked that question yesterday to Charlie. And he's going to get back with us, but that was included in the entire scope of the project.
I know. We have, we have to ensure those tanks.
We do.
And, and there is a agency that we go through. And I wouldn't be surprised that some of that, that they have to have some oversight in that process. But we'll continue to work with Monarch to make sure.
We asked that exact same question just yesterday, though. Yep.
Any other questions from the board? All right, thank you, Mrs. Webber, Mr. Level. We don't take any questions. Right, moving on to the number three. I need a motion for the approval of the change order for EH Green intermodal.
Approve. There's a few here that I just, actually two that I want to point out. Three. The first one's a sidewalk, the Mapledale. So this was an alternate in the original scope. This is connecting basically right here outside the board office to the new bus line. So the bus line's going to come here on the east side of the property. And so we, obviously, this is an important one for us. We have a lot of bike riders that come through this area. Being able to connect that space is important. The one thing I want to call out here, though, is that we have been in constant communication with the neighbors. I believe this is Stonehenge right here, is that right? This drive right here? I might have the name of that street wrong. But anyways, we've been in constant contact with them, two families specifically that this sidewalk backs up with. They are in favor of the sidewalk. However, we're working through what vegetation's going to go because the city requires us to have a buffer between the sidewalk and their property line. They, it is a great, great conversation. But I did want to let you all know that we were, we let them know we were putting this up for your approval, but we weren't going to stop conversations once we get approval. But we are working with our arborist to figure out what that will be there. So I just wanted to highlight that and let you all know. The other one that you'll see on here at the very bottom is the concrete cap on the existing electric service. That one's on there because this was something that came up as they progressed. And they realized that they obviously have to keep the electrical happening for the old building. But they're also going to have to switch at the same time for electric at the new building. And so they had to do, what they had to do is create a whole new kind of pit that you actually walk down into with the service for the existing building. And then now they're going to have to go through and cap that off once they switch over to electric to the new building. So that's what that's there for. And then obviously, the third one. And then obviously, the third one, the 200, almost $260,000 alternate, that is the information that we've given you about the flooring alternatives to go to a non-wax surface in that building. And again, we're advocating for that because we believe that not only is that the right decision to make at this time, but also the cost savings for our operations in the future, which is called out within the strategic plan as well. This will help us with cost savings 10 to 15 years down the line.
So my only question on this is, are, are the, is this change order reflected in the numbers that you already shared with us?
Yes.
We did not see the, the information.
Making this flooring upgrade decision, though, is one of those decision points for us as we start to think about that soft cost contingency and how we can then move that to EH Green to really help EH Green cross the finish line in a healthy way. So it does obviously impact that contingency, which you saw, which is why it was lower.
The flooring, it's similar to the flooring that's at Blue Ash because of the concern around soft materials.
Yeah, absolutely. So the best example would be Sims, if you've been in the new Sims. So the LBT flooring kind of looks like that hardwood flooring in the hallways. And then the kinetics, which you had mentioned, of the blue ashes, will be in the other spaces. It's very easily cleaned, replaceable, somewhat indestructible. I asked about the LBT and they said it'll, it'll get ugly before it wears out, right? Like over time, 20, 30 years, just like any type of VCT tile wood or anything like that. So, so it'll be much more similar to Sims, but yes, the same kind of carpet flooring as Blue Ash. And I would call out that we are proactively working through our capital improvement budget over the course of the years to cover up that VC tile, T tile and put the kinetics down. So it's an ongoing process in the district. This would just be that booster shot to kind of get it done at the very beginning. My pleasure.
You have a question? This is Heather, please call the ball. Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Popper?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mrs. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Motion passes, I need a motion for the approval of the change order for the support junior high construction project.
So.
All right, um, this one here, the 33,005 for the locker room renovations. This was a scope change once they started to get into the project and realized they needed to take down some of those locker rooms in order for the progress to continue. We had to convert those locker rooms, so it was male, female. We had to convert them into one space with a wall and basically renovate them so they still had locker rooms, still usable, but we continued the project. I have, excuse me, I have a few bullet points about that. If you want, I can send to you via email to let you know the full scope of that, but that's really what that is.
This is Weber, please call the ball. Mr. Popper?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mrs. White?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
And Mr. Evans?
Aye.
I need a motion for the approval of the change order for the support junior high construction project, GMP number two.
So.
Excuse me, again, these were what we talked about previously in another meeting, some of those flooring changes. We had intended to have the concrete, kind of that industrial look in those areas. And due to how they ended up after change piping, the floors just looked awful. I don't know how else to say it. And so it almost looked like they didn't finish the project. And so we went ahead and did some kinetics carving through the hallways in there.
Any questions from the board? This is Weber, please call the ball. Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Popper?
Aye.
And Mr. Evans?
Aye.
All right, moving on, I need a motion for the approval of the 2022, 2023 full day kindergarten tuition rate.
So move, second.
This is Weber.
Yeah, as, as has been our practice, we look at the additional cost of the teacher's time for additional classes to be able to cover the costs for our full day kindergarten program. We also provide a waiver of fees for those students who participate or actually who are eligible for our free and reduced lunch program. That's an important issue because right now, everybody's participating. It's really for those who are eligible on a income-based basis. We, this year have 308 students who are participating in our full day kindergarten program on a 433 total kindergarteners. A little over 11% of those students who are participating in the full day program are happy to be using which is fairly similar to our free and reduced lunch program. So I know that our, our principals are still working to try to make sure that those families who aren't eligible are wearing the program and being able to have that, that waived and preventing their participation. Looking forward to probably another big kindergarten class.
Any other, any questions from the board?
I just have one question, it's not about this one. Usually you have the preschool as well.
Preschool will be coming back probably after the first of the year. I know we're still doing some work on determining what our preschool program might look like next year and whether we're going to be able to expand that next year for another plan, master facility plan. So I think, I don't know if that'll be next year or the following year, but that needs to be taken into consideration when we determine those preschool rates.
You're trying to still make it across the country situation. That's what guys, guys.
Do you know if, if all families that want a full day this year were able to get in full day? Or is this program large enough for anybody who wants it? Are we still a lottery system?
I, no.
I don't know either.
You can get back.
You know, they're preparing, I, I know right now they're really underway with planning for kindergarten registration. But that may be just something that.
All right, any other questions from the board? This is Weber, please call the ball. Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Popper?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye, motion passes, I need a motion for the approval of the agreement with the City of Montgomery for data and sound services.
So move, second.
Mr. Fritz, do you know about this?
Yeah, this is. This is, uh, we know this for about five to six years. We started a relationship with City of Montgomery that we actually have our high school right across the street from their public works building, and they actually connect to us through fiber. They run across a network, so we provide them assistance with data, getting a better connectivity with their buildings. And also, we provide them with network engineering services head on needed. So it's a little bit of an insurance policy for them. They're small and agile, we'll be helping them, it's a great relationship. So people are very supportive of it in the past, and so what, what?
I think it's a great partnership, any questions from the board?
We, do we monitor how much network engineers' time is used to determine, how do you come up with that 14,000?
We do, we actually, when we first started, Mr. Bell, we started to ask how, we think this is what it's going to be. We've all been under that number, so we've never exceeded what we have crossed as a monthly number. They actually, and we don't even carry it over, so we do monitor it, so. Yeah, I mean, it's always been under, I would, Matthew at City Montgomery and I work together all the time on a regular basis. They've worked with us, he collaborated with us on the fiber that's in front of the junior high through this construction process as well, so.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you for asking.
Yeah, all right, this is Weber, please call the ball. Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Popper?
Aye.
I, motion passes, I need a motion for the approval of the contact with academic, or with, for academic services.
So move, second.
So this is to support students with, is the female equivalent compensatory services for COVID recovery for a time that this child did not receive services during the pandemic.
Any questions from the board?
Do you foresee that we'll have additional students that were making up for services that weren't provided during COVID?
This was a pretty unique situation. We've been trying to rectify those as we've gone through this year. So at this time, we don't anticipate that they're going to be there.
This is Weber, please call the ball. Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. White?
Aye.
Mr. Popper?
Aye.
Motion passes, I need a motion for the approval of the contract for academic behavioral learning enrichment.
So move, second.
This contract is to support adult support services for a student who is placed in a separate facility and requires additional adult support for helping save. We weren't able to hire directly because of staffing shortages, so we had to look at other agencies to help support finding a staff for us to be able to appropriately serve these students.
Any questions from the board? This is Weber, please call the ball. Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mrs. White?
Aye.
Mr. Popper?
Aye.
Motion passes? Anything else, Mr. Lewis?
Just a couple of quick others. You mentioned it a little bit, you know, it's always an aviator campaign just off a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, as we have been working towards raising funds for capital projects through athletics and other areas such as theater, some of the other pieces of our schools. And it, it was a successful event, a lot of attendance, a lot of good energy. And now we actually, we're meeting today to keep that energy going and taking the next step. So I appreciate the, the people that were able to be there and certainly all the energy in the community and all the people that have already given to the project. On top of that, you know, winter, I would say the winter season for music and art is kind of kicking off at really full swing. So last night I went to the choir concert, that was great. Spent some time at the variety show earlier prior to this week. So again, to be able to see our students perform is pretty amazing. And, you know, especially some of the soloists, I don't know where, where our students come from. I mean, when I look and watch their, you know, listen to their singing, I'm just amazed that, and I'm glad I'm not up there. Darling, believe me.
Ask universal, Mr. Lewis.
And then, you know, our basketball team had their first home game last night, a big win. If you have not watched our basketball team and have not been able to see their growth and development, just the way they play together, and I was just amazed. We have two kids that are over six foot eight, and they're amazing to watch. The way they operate, the skill, the footwork is amazing. So I'm excited to see the other winter teams and wrestling's kicking off, world basketball's kicked off. So, you know, just giving a lot of activity and events, and I would encourage people to get out and see not only our student athletes, but our students perform as much as they can under this pressure.
Yeah, and I don't have more to say, but Mr. Ewing said how to schedule, actually. I'll use it for performance, whatever. It's very helpful, so thank you, Mr. Ewing, I'm sure listening. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Lewis. All right, moving on to the treacherous agenda, I need a motion for the approval of the third reading of the policy EPC anti-fraud protection for reporting secret law violations.
So move, second.
That's the third reading of the policy that we have determined is, is something needed to meet our audit requirements. Thank you, Mr. Evans, for bringing this forward, there are very changes on the second.
Any other comments from the board? Thank you, Mr. Evans. Weber, Mr. Popper, Weber, Mr. Drew. This is Weber, please call the ball. Mr. Popper?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. White?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Question passes, I need a motion for the approval of the personal consent agenda and then include items two A from the addendum.
Second.
Call the ball. Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Popper?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
And Mrs. White?
Aye. Moving on to other Board of Education business, just as kind of an informational, we have our organizational meeting that will be held on January 5th, 2022. That's hard to say, at 7:00 PM at Mapledale Elementary. Prior to that, at 6 o'clock, we'll have a tax budget hearing. So if everyone can look at the schedule that is being proposed, we need to approve that on the 5th. We've been a president, I need to appoint a board member or a member to serve as the president for Tim to convene a 2022 organizational meeting. So I have, I think we talked about this, Mr. Popper, would you be willing to serve as the president for that organizational meeting?
Sure.
Board of Education meeting schedule, again, please take a look at those. I know we have a couple of dates that conflict with the Jewish holidays. I'll be talking to Mrs. Clark about finding an alternative date for it, it was not before, as a scheduling issue. All right, anything else for the good of the cause, Mr. Lewis?
Just really quickly to answer Mr. Allen's question about full day career, the principals waited. They did not have any waitlist in schools. They had a few, a few full open spots, but I believe they've been filled to a new enrollees at this point, if you waitlist. At the beginning of the year, we did not have any availability in there.
Thanks for the quick response, wow, amazing.
You're on it.
But also, yeah, all right.
It's a benefit of having the virtual office.
That's right, thank you out there, principals of the elementary school. All right, anything else, Mrs. Weber?
I do.
Anything else from the board? All right, with that, I need a motion to go into executive session in accordance with ORC 121.2221, employment evaluation and discipline of a public employee, official or regulated individual. And in accordance with ORC 121.2221, purpose of proper.
So move, second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the ball.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mr. Popper?
Aye.
And Mrs. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Allen?
Aye.
All right, we do not anticipate a vote, so thank you for joining us this morning. We did pretty good, you guys, eight corners. So everyone have a good day, thank you very much.